K L T V Audio check, K L T V Audio check.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday morning meeting, public meeting of the B O C C. We'll start with the flag salute if you want to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the vote for which stance one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ask Commissioner Mortensen to give us a review of the minutes.
Yes, I did review the minutes of the activities last week and I moved to approve those minutes.
Any questions? I don't see any hands on the minutes will be coming up. If we have a motion, I would call for the vote. Those in favor.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Run over consent agenda today. Under call for hearings, we have a call for hearing on December 5th at 9:30 a.m. On our proposed six-year transportation improvement program. This is something we we update every every year and we'll go over that. Agreements, contract bid awards, contract with the Washington State Department of Agriculture to survey for and treat Class A noxious weeds and milk feshial thistle, Turkish thistle, and slender flower thistle from Calhoun County through June 30th of 2024. This agreement provides grant funding an amount of $1,550 for us to do that. Completion letter to Quick Brothers, Inc. for the Pacific Avenue North Half Bridge project. That's all wrapped up. Project we've talked about the last couple of weeks. So we executed a contract with All Stripes LLC for installation and upgrade of curve warning signs on various roads in the county. If you remember, this is a fully funded project by the state. We have a software license renewal with Francisco Duo two-factor office. Shouldn't put big words in here. Office.
You're 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 mocking me.
No, I'm not mocking you. I'm mocking myself. For one year to provide two different factors when you verify identity. Total cost is $52,585.20. We have the budget for consolidated Dyke District number one of Calhoun County. They have a total budget of, I looked through it, of $3.4 million. Board correspondence, a letter from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding Merwin Yale and Swift Number One project. It's basically telling us they had no developing, they reviewed a report and had no developing dam safety issues. Then a notice from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission preliminary review of 12th CSIR Yale project. And that basically just telling us we received the safety report and they will review it. And then a letter from the city of Kalama regarding the mental health tax. Cities have been sending out formal letters and now we got Kalamas. Vouchers in amount of $1,595.154 and 6 cents. Questions on the consent agenda?
I'll just make a comment on item number four regarding the duo. I we we're so far downstream now, we're going to continue that, but I hope we review that in the future and see if there other alternatives that are not quite so expensive.
Yeah, you had some good comments on that in the workshop yesterday, so we'll follow through with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented today.
Have a motion on the floor. Last chance for comments. I see no hands, nobody approaching. Hey, we call for a vote. Those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Run over consent agenda today. Under call for hearings, we have a call for hearing on December 5th at 9:30 a.m. On our proposed six-year transportation improvement program. This is something we we update every every year and we'll go over that. Agreements, contract bid awards, contract with the Washington State Department of Agriculture to survey for and treat Class A noxious weeds and milk feshial thistle, Turkish thistle, and slender flower thistle from Calhoun County through June 30th of 2024. This agreement provides grant funding an amount of $1,550 for us to do that. Completion letter to Quick Brothers, Inc. for the Pacific Avenue North Half Bridge project. That's all wrapped up. Project we've talked about the last couple of weeks. So we executed a contract with All Stripes LLC for installation and upgrade of curve warning signs on various roads in the county. If you remember, this is a fully funded project by the state. We have a software license renewal with Francisco Duo two-factor office. Shouldn't put big words in here. Office.
You're 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 mocking me.
No, I'm not mocking you. I'm mocking myself. For one year to provide two different factors when you verify identity. Total cost is $52,585.20. We have the budget for consolidated Dyke District number one of Calhoun County. They have a total budget of, I looked through it, of $3.4 million. Board correspondence, a letter from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding Merwin Yale and Swift Number One project. It's basically telling us they had no developing, they reviewed a report and had no developing dam safety issues. Then a notice from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission preliminary review of 12th CSIR Yale project. And that basically just telling us we received the safety report and they will review it. And then a letter from the city of Kalama regarding the mental health tax. Cities have been sending out formal letters and now we got Kalamas. Vouchers in amount of $1,595.154 and 6 cents. Questions on the consent agenda?
I'll just make a comment on item number four regarding the duo. I we we're we're so far downstream now, we're going to continue that, but I hope we review that in the future and see if there other alternatives that are not quite so expensive.
Yeah, you had some good comments on that in the workshop yesterday, so we'll follow through with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented today.
Have a motion on the floor. Last chance for comments. I see no hands, nobody approaching. Hey, we call for a vote. Those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Run over consent agenda today. Under call for hearings, we have a call for hearing on December 5th at 9:30 a.m. On our proposed six-year transportation improvement program. This is something we we update every every year and we'll go over that. Agreements, contract bid awards, contract with the Washington State Department of Agriculture to survey for and treat Class A noxious weeds and milk feshial thistle, Turkish thistle, and slender flower thistle from Calhoun County through June 30th of 2024. This agreement provides grant funding an amount of $1,550 for us to do that. Completion letter to Quick Brothers, Inc. for the Pacific Avenue North Half Bridge project. That's all wrapped up. Project we've talked about the last couple of weeks. So we executed a contract with All Stripes LLC for installation and upgrade of curve warning signs on various roads in the county. If you remember, this is a fully funded project by the state. We have a software license renewal with Francisco Duo two-factor office. Shouldn't put big words in here. Office.
You're 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 mocking me.
No, I'm not mocking you. I'm mocking myself. For one year to provide two different factors when you verify identity. Total cost is $52,585.20. We have the budget for consolidated Dyke District number one of Calhoun County. They have a total budget of, I looked through it, of $3.4 million. Board correspondence, a letter from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding Merwin Yale and Swift Number One project. It's basically telling us they had no developing, they reviewed a report and had no developing dam safety issues. Then a notice from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission preliminary review of 12th CSIR Yale project. And that basically just telling us we received the safety report and they will review it. And then a letter from the city of Kalama regarding the mental health tax. Cities have been sending out formal letters and now we got Kalamas. Vouchers in amount of $1,595.154 and 6 cents. Questions on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented today.
Have a motion on the floor. Last chance for comments. I see no hands, nobody approaching. Hey, we call for a vote. Those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Run over consent agenda today. Under call for hearings, we have a call for hearing on December 5th at 9:30 a.m. On our proposed six-year transportation improvement program. This is something we we update every every year and we'll go over that. Agreements, contract bid awards, contract with the Washington State Department of Agriculture to survey for and treat Class A noxious weeds and milk feshial thistle, Turkish thistle, and slender flower thistle from Calhoun County through June 30th of 2024. This agreement provides grant funding an amount of $1,550 for us to do that. Completion letter to Quick Brothers, Inc. for the Pacific Avenue North Half Bridge project. That's all wrapped up. Project we've talked about the last couple of weeks. So we executed a contract with All Stripes LLC for installation and upgrade of curve warning signs on various roads in the county. If you remember, this is a fully funded project by the state. We have a software license renewal with Francisco Duo two-factor office. Shouldn't put big words in here. Office.
You're 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 mocking me.
No, I'm not mocking you. I'm mocking myself. For one year to provide two different factors when you verify identity. Total cost is $52,585.20. We have the budget for consolidated Dyke District number one of Calhoun County. They have a total budget of, I looked through it, of $3.4 million. Board correspondence, a letter from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding Merwin Yale and Swift Number One project. It's basically telling us they had no developing, they reviewed a report and had no developing dam safety issues. Then a notice from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission preliminary review of 12th CSIR Yale project. And that basically just telling us we received the safety report and they will review it. And then a letter from the city of Kalama regarding the mental health tax. Cities have been sending out formal letters and now we got Kalamas. Vouchers in amount of $1,595.154 and 6 cents. Questions on the consent agenda?
I'll just make a comment on item number four regarding the duo. I we we're we're so far downstream now, we're going to continue that, but I hope we review that in the future and see if there other alternatives that are not quite so expensive.
Yeah, you had some good comments on that in the workshop yesterday, so we'll follow through with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented today.
Have a motion on the floor. Last chance for comments. I see no hands, nobody approaching. Hey, we call for a vote. Those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you.
Run over consent agenda today. Under call for hearings, we have a call for hearing on December 5th at 9:30 a.m. On our proposed six-year transportation improvement program. This is something we we update every every year and we'll go over that. Agreements, contract bid awards, contract with the Washington State Department of Agriculture to survey for and treat Class A noxious weeds and milk feshial thistle, Turkish thistle, and slender flower thistle from Calhoun County through June 30th of 2024. This agreement provides grant funding an amount of $1,550 for us to do that. Completion letter to Quick Brothers, Inc. for the Pacific Avenue North Half Bridge project. That's all wrapped up. Project we've talked about the last couple of weeks. So we executed a contract with All Stripes LLC for installation and upgrade of curve warning signs on various roads in the county. If you remember, this is a fully funded project by the state. We have a software license renewal with Francisco Duo two-factor office. Shouldn't put big words in here. Office.
You're 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 mocking me.
No, I'm not mocking you. I'm mocking myself. For one year to provide two different factors when you verify identity. Total cost is $52,585.20. We have the budget for consolidated Dyke District number one of Calhoun County. They have a total budget of, I looked through it, of $3.4 million. Board correspondence, a letter from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding Merwin Yale and Swift Number One project. It's basically telling us they had no developing, they reviewed a report and had no developing dam safety issues. Then a notice from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission preliminary review of 12th CSIR Yale project. And that basically just telling us we received the safety report and they will review it. And then a letter from the city of Kalama regarding the mental health tax. Cities have been sending out formal letters and now we got Kalamas. Vouchers in amount of $1,595.154 and 6 cents. Questions on the consent agenda?
I'll just make a comment on item number four regarding the duo. I we we're we're so far downstream now, we're going to continue that, but I hope we review that in the future and see if there other alternatives that are not quite so expensive.
Yeah, you had some good comments on that in the workshop yesterday, so we'll follow through with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented today.
Have a motion on the floor. Last chance for comments. I see no hands, nobody approaching. Hey, we call for a vote. Those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Run over consent agenda today. Under call for hearings, we have a call for hearing on December 5th at 9:30 a.m. On our proposed six-year transportation improvement program. This is something we we update every every year and we'll go over that. Agreements, contract bid awards, contract with the Washington State Department of Agriculture to survey for and treat Class A noxious weeds and milk feshial thistle, Turkish thistle, and slender flower thistle from Calhoun County through June 30th of 2024. This agreement provides grant funding an amount of $1,550 for us to do that. Completion letter to Quick Brothers, Inc. for the Pacific Avenue North Half Bridge project. That's all wrapped up. Project we've talked about the last couple of weeks. So we executed a contract with All Stripes LLC for installation and upgrade of curve warning signs on various roads in the county. If you remember, this is a fully funded project by the state. We have a software license renewal with Francisco Duo two-factor office. Shouldn't put big words in here. Office.
You're 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 mocking me.
No, I'm not mocking you. I'm mocking myself. For one year to provide two different factors when you verify identity. Total cost is $52,585.20. We have the budget for consolidated Dyke District number one of Calhoun County. They have a total budget of, I looked through it, of $3.4 million. Board correspondence, a letter from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding Merwin Yale and Swift Number One project. It's basically telling us they had no developing, they reviewed a report and had no developing dam safety issues. Then a notice from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission preliminary review of 12th CSIR Yale project. And that basically just telling us we received the safety report and they will review it. And then a letter from the city of Kalama regarding the mental health tax. Cities have been sending out formal letters and now we got Kalamas. Vouchers in amount of $1,595.154 and 6 cents. Questions on the consent agenda?
I'll just make a comment on item number four regarding the duo. I we we're we're so far downstream now, we're going to continue that, but I hope we review that in the future and see if there other alternatives that are not quite so expensive.
Yeah, you had some good comments on that in the workshop yesterday, so we'll follow through with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented today.
Have a motion on the floor. Last chance for comments. I see no hands, nobody approaching. Hey, we call for a vote. Those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Run over consent agenda today. Under call for hearings, we have a call for hearing on December 5th at 9:30 a.m. On our proposed six-year transportation improvement program. This is something we we update every every year and we'll go over that. Agreements, contract bid awards, contract with the Washington State Department of Agriculture to survey for and treat Class A noxious weeds and milk feshial thistle, Turkish thistle, and slender flower thistle from Calhoun County through June 30th of 2024. This agreement provides grant funding an amount of $1,550 for us to do that. Completion letter to Quick Brothers, Inc. for the Pacific Avenue North Half Bridge project. That's all wrapped up. Project we've talked about the last couple of weeks. So we executed a contract with All Stripes LLC for installation and upgrade of curve warning signs on various roads in the county. If you remember, this is a fully funded project by the state. We have a software license renewal with Francisco Duo two-factor office. Shouldn't put big words in here. Office.
You're 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 mocking me.
No, I'm not mocking you. I'm mocking myself. For one year to provide two different factors when you verify identity. Total cost is $52,585.20. We have the budget for consolidated Dyke District number one of Calhoun County. They have a total budget of, I looked through it, of $3.4 million. Board correspondence, a letter from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding Merwin Yale and Swift Number One project. It's basically telling us they had no developing, they reviewed a report and had no developing dam safety issues. Then a notice from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission preliminary review of 12th CSIR Yale project. And that basically just telling us we received the safety report and they will review it. And then a letter from the city of Kalama regarding the mental health tax. Cities have been sending out formal letters and now we got Kalamas. Vouchers in amount of $1,595.154 and 6 cents. Questions on the consent agenda?
I'll just make a comment on item number four regarding the duo. I we we're we're so far downstream now, we're going to continue that, but I hope we review that in the future and see if there other alternatives that are not quite so expensive.
Yeah, you had some good comments on that in the workshop yesterday, so we'll follow through with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented today.
Have a motion on the floor. Last chance for comments. I see no hands, nobody approaching. Hey, we call for a vote. Those in favor.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Uh, one motion item today. Facilities maintenance.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Will Tosted, Facility Service Manager. Uh, so what we have today is a change order, uh, for, uh, adding, uh, for replacing, um, broken fan thermal units, also called F T U's at the jail. It's a little over half the units, eleven out of twenty, um, for approximately twenty-three thousand, two oh four fifty-eight. Uh, this is part of a larger project, a jail HVAC project that was about six hundred thousand dollars. Um, the reason this wasn't included in the original contract because we didn't know how many were broken. Um, as part of the original jail, uh, HVAC replacement project, there was a discovery with the contractor J H Kelly, um, that identified the broken units and this is the cost for repairs to those.
Twenty-three thousand, four eleven units.
Yep.
About two thousand. Any questions from us? The entertainer.
Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, um, change order number two, as has been discussed.
Here we have a motion on the floor. See no hands raised. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you, Will.
Thank you for your time.
Moving through today. Uh, couple of things before we get into public comment this afternoon. We have, uh, in our one thirty P M workshop, we have uh, we'll have a discussion on the planning commission. I'll probably lead that one. And we have public works also coming in. We're trying to finalize some of what their uh, maintenance items for this coming year. Next Tuesday, Wednesday, we, next Tuesday, we won't have a meeting because or Wednesday, because, uh, Commissioner Weber and myself will be at a Washington State WASAC, uh, function over in Spokane, so there won't be any meeting next week. And I think that's it. With that, we'll open it up.
I wasn't going to comment on this, but I just saw it in today's paper and like Will Rogers, all I know is what I read in the paper. And I must condemn or a lot of people would like to condemn, but I I can't. It's another word. I commendate the fourth estate. They did their job on the county, uh, mental health tax. They really did an investigative article. I thought way back when, before the radio net between the fire and police department was coded, especially the special units. We used to listen to the police calls because we would be close behind because somebody was injured. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it Judge Johansson and Judge Warning that started the drug court? I believe it was, at least in Johansson's case.
What I hear. I remember particularly championing that.
Right.
Um, Judge Johansson was on the bench at the time with supportive, I believe, before she went to this, uh, court of appeals.
Division two.
Yeah.
Well, there was an inmate work crew working on Judge Warning's house or lawn, I believe. And we were listening to the call. Apparently there was a warrant for on one of the inmate work crew and I believe, uh, oh, Jerry Gomes was in charge back then. He's now retired from the Department of Corrections. And we were listening to the call and there seemed to be a scuffle about drug use among the work crew. And several people were arrested. And the funny part about that, the ones that were charged and convicted were before Judge Warning, so that was kind of humorous back then. And then we looked into it further because the drug court was new. And the success rate at the time, and I checked this with my instructors down in Portland, was only three percent. Now I see where they say it's thirty percent. Is that correct?
I don't know. I I I hear a lot of numbers.
Yeah, it was there. Yeah, there was a lot of numbers and I believe.
I mean, specifically to success rate there, it's been the devil for me to really narrow it down and it's just it isn't success. It's always success at what other cost.
Yeah, that was over the whole program with the mental health and all that. And if you watch Longview's mental health, uh, unit, you need a body cam to believe what's going on with that unit. And where the money's going is fantastic.
If you could explain that, I'd appreciate it.
They lease rooms with various hotels in Longview and then
The they is who?
Uh.
The, uh, you say they lease?
The city of Longview does.
Okay.
To the tune of several thousand dollars a month and then they dump the people off in these rooms for one day. Then they're back out on the street. I've observed that with my own eyes, but I'm not. I just ran into this this morning and that's not why I'm here. Anyway, enough of that. And if these cities, they've been sending you letters, right? To support this mental health tax, correct?
They have, yes.
If they want the tax, why don't they tax the individual cities themselves through their city council? And not bother you people? That's just an observation.
Yeah.
Anyway, this is what I'm here. Another, uh, county request for access to public records. Uh, I will read it and then I'll give everybody copies. All records concerning the Calhoun's Public Development Authority, members, who they are, background of members, authorities that they're in charge with, bylaws, agency structure, who gave it authority to form? Uh, second one, the event center manager, name of event center manager, who hired her and her responsibilities and duties? And I'll give you the copies right now. That's all I have. Okay. Any? Thank you.
In in this request, are you looking for anything in particular? Is there something you noted that you think needs to be fixed?
I'll go back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was this summer, probably in June. And you have pictures of who these people are, the Calhoun's Public Development Authority, and you have a counterpart over at the city. And your county counterpart seems to have a plaque on the Columbia Theater. But when I go in there, the secretary or this event center manager says, well, can you tell me who these people are with their pictures on the wall? And I believe I came to you, Commissioner Dennis, uh, Weber. And I mentioned exactly right here. What she told me went, well, the first secretary or whatever she was said, well, she didn't know. And she pointed over to this person who was looking at a computer screen. And I said, can you, uh, give me a list of who these people are and what their duties are? And she said, I believe, and I quote, uh, good luck with that. I don't have time. Okay, that's fine. You know, she responded, then I came to you. And I said, is that a proper response for a county employee? And I believe you said no. Correct? Well, now you have the public records request. It's official. So I don't know. I don't know how the last one's doing. That was Mr. Swanson and why he was fired and what, under what circumstances? So two public records requests, one for why Mr. Swanson's had been fired and the reasons thereof. And now this public records request for who these members are in the Calhoun's Public Development Authority. And I know there's some crossover. You got the same members on this board as you do with the Longview Board. And I go over there to the city of Longview and I, when's your next meeting? Well, we don't know. Uh, I I said, do you have an agenda? No. And then I asked for the minutes of the meeting and they go, well, they have to be approved first. Like you just did here with the county minutes. I never got those minutes.
So did they ever provide you with the times and meeting places for their regularly scheduled meetings?
No, they didn't.
Because they have full public meetings all at once a month.
Well, well, they seem to be able to schedule them when they want. They don't have a regular schedule. If they decide to have a meeting, they have a meeting.
So the Calhoun County Public Facilities District Board meets.
Longview.
Well, yeah, well, you got to ask Longview about that. I don't know about that.
Well, you have dual members on both, uh, committees or Development Authority. And this girl, who I believe at the last meeting I attended, she was discussing the sprinkler system and it was the same girl that said, well, good luck with that. And then I went to you, Commissioner Weber, and nothing happened. So, and it's the same over in Longview. Like I asked for an agenda and, well, it hasn't been approved yet. Well, can you tell me when the next meeting is? Well, we don't know. They picked their own times. Direct quote from the secretary to that Public Development Authority over there. Well, anyway, that's the situation and the current state of affairs. Go ahead.
Regarding Axel Swanson, he left here on his own free w- w- will. He turned in his resignation. He took a position up at, um, um,
WASAC.
He returned, yeah, he returned to WASAC.
Well, uh, that, uh, Miss, uh, Commissioner Weber, you told me you fired him.
No, I never said that. I wouldn't. In fact, I didn't support that.
Yeah.
So.
Well, just the public records on his resignation, his letter of resignation and it was convenient considering what was happening in the county at that time. And the newspaper article was very expansive on what happened. So I wonder where that information came from. Well, anyway, here's your
What did the newspaper say?
It was very expansive on what happened. Did you ever read the article? Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, anyway, here's your public records request for today. Thank you.
So, so Steve, I I'm I'm a little confused with your request. You've given us a copy and you crossed out the word facility and replaced it with development.
Yeah.
Now, a development authority is different from a facilities authority.
And
The the Calhoun County Public Development Authority that we have right now.
That's why I crossed it out because I do
But I want to make sure you get, but I want to make sure you get the documents that that you've actually requested.
Well, both.
The public, the public development authority that we created is what is running the nine-one-one center right now.
Well, that's a different
That's a different thing.
Kettle of fish.
But when you cross out facilities, then that changes the whole request. And I think you want the the facilities, uh,
No, I want the event senator, uh, event center center. She's the facilities, uh, manager.
Mm-hmm.
And the authority is the Calhoun's Public Development Authority.
No. You got those terms mixed up. It's the
Well.
Public Facilities District Board. That's what you need to ask for. Public Facilities District.
To settle this question, let's have the public records for both, shall we? And we'll compare.
Well.
Thank you.
Yeah, just just one comment on that, Steve. Uh, it public records requests are not free and I know that you are, uh, very cognizant of expenses. There is effort from within. I'm not saying the 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 dime, a sheet of paper or anything like that. I'm saying the time that staff has to go through, uh,
Well, I'm already paying that through my property taxes.
If you look at the way we're, uh, the way your taxes go.
Crawfishing now?
I beg your pardon?
Crawfishing. Avoiding, avoiding the subject.
No, not at all. I'm not that kind of person. You ought to know that by now.
Talking about fees, I'm well aware of the fees. I've been here before this board on the fees.
Yeah, but you're
And what we're charged.
You you are not charged for the amount of time and effort that goes through there. Your taxes, I I I've I've had this from everybody said, but I pay my taxes. Your taxes don't like, you know, maybe they pay five cents worth of it or a penny.
You know, your county employees are valuable and I was wondering, how are they doing with their four-day weekend that we're paying for? Are they all right? Are they rested?
Four-day weekend, uh,
Yeah, you're not open on Friday, certain departments.
Right, just that that I'm going to
Well, I I wanted to know, how are they? Are they resting nicely on their four-day weekend?
I don't check them when they leave here. I check the public coming to me and saying, I'm not happy or unhappy.
Well, Longview has a four-day weekend too. Three days. Yeah, you're you're correct. It is three days. Most people get two days or no days at all. If you're fighting a wildfire. I can speak from experience in that.
Oh, yeah, I'm well aware of that.
Anyway, I thank you for the correction back here. So are the county, are the county employees, uh, safe, rested now that they get a three-day weekend on the taxpayer's dime? Because most of them are salaried except for your, probably your road crew. E- everybody rested and and are they safe? Are they? You don't know? Okay, well, forget the question, you know, they get they get a three-day weekend. Well, I haven't got the first, uh, public records. Let's see what happens with this one. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Mike Kaizen. I reside at six fifteen Monahan Road, Castle Rock, Washington. I too, like Mr. Drag, each had no intention of commenting here this morning, but he drug one out of me. Uh, as a matter of fact, this morning I seen young Axel Swanson with my own eyes. He was driving through the traffic jam in Castle Rock, but I didn't catch him till he went past. I honked the horn. I didn't see him look in the mirror, but I waved at him. And from all outward appearances, he seems to be doing quite well. He looks good, has a nice little car to drive himself to Olympia and all is well, as far as I could see. Just wanted to make sure everybody got to hear that and thank you very much for your time and consideration.
No, we got somebody.
I was just gonna thank.
Oh, okay.
Hello, I'm Robert Johnson. And as you know, you probably know me. In prior things that I brought to the commissioner's attention, I have the pictures that I provided you guys, the distance of these RVs, which are a foot apart. And you guys have your regulations in the county to govern that, which is not put apart. Here it is. I provided them to Arnie, I provided them to Dennis, and I provided them to Rick. Last time Rick called me a liar and said, bring the truth. I'm sure some of these people behind me wondered if I was going to bring the truth. Well, I sent it to you that day. And you guys, I'm sure you brought it forth to the constituents of Calhoun County and let them know that I was telling the truth. Here's the pictures that the people can look at. Right there. And then I'm going to go further on about the stuff that's happened due to the state's attorney complaints. We won that case. We're waiting for them to respond with their books. But mine's in regards to Sheriff's Department. Assaulted 70 year old by these people, punched him through his RV, punched him in the face through his RV. Sheriff did nothing about it. I was called a fucking faggot last week by the same people and said they were going to kick my ass when I pulled into the driveway after I came from the courthouse with Craig McCurry's paperwork and public records that I requested. The cop did not do his job again. And when you come out and I'm the reporting person, I'm the reporting person. And they go to the office to where the person that's been doing this all along, that has a record of violence, pistol whipped, Tim Gilbert, 2021 to 2022 restraining order, okay? Doug Hatley, Ralph, Doug Ralph Hatley Jr. This is ridiculous. And I'm called a liar in this meeting by our chairperson on, on this stuff even. And this all correlates together. The Sheriff's Department hasn't done their job. I have eight police reports. I filed a Federal Bureau of Investigation report last week and I'm a nervous wreck because of this. We've been following the rule of law with everything we've done. Every time the cops have come, these people did it at my home. I didn't go to them. And we don't get it because I brought this to your attention four or five months ago about Brad Thurman. We requested three times to see him, me and Joanna Barnhart, which has a restraining order against these individuals. Okay, what does it take to get support? I, I just don't trust what's going on here. And even with the county stuff that we've talked about, nobody's done their job properly. But if I look at the RCWs, which I have here, that governs this, it doesn't allow this. It doesn't allow this. Now you want to talk to Snohomish County Fire Department? They just had fatalities up there in an RV park. Okay, October 29th, girl lost her life. They were further apart. Why aren't they being enforced? But you want to pass more stuff to police, but you don't even take care of the stuff we already have in the county or the city? I wanted to make an appointment with you, Dennis, because you seem the most rational here. I've watched these meetings patiently. And when Judge Gary Basher came here, he was interrogated about rent, rent evictions. He was coming here to get a judge appointed. That stuff should have never happened and the chairman should have solved that because it had no bearing on why Gary Basher was here. And I got up and spoke after that and said it was ridiculous. I'll give you the report numbers to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. I talked to the DOJ back east. I'm filing a report with them. I told them that Mr. Dahl called me a liar in here. And then I sent you guys these emails. You all three told me in the last meeting you got them. Did we talk to these folks about this yet? Now, yeah, I've went everywhere legally. These people have ganged up on older folks. They're all drug addicts. Their criminal records are severe. I sent letters to the owners yesterday. I sent letters to Craig McCurry. And I'm sure you guys know of this guy and I'm sure the other guy definitely knows of him. It's time to get off our duffs and do an internal investigation into the Sheriff's Department. Period. Yesterday I had the sheriff out there because the guy was taking pictures of me as I came in. He's been fired by the park. He's the brother-in-law of the manager of the park. He's still out antagonizing me. I've been in the hospital because of this. I have the records. They said I was a drug addict. I, I went immediately down and got a drug test. They lied in the court in January 12th at Joanna Barnhart's restraining order. They lied in the court when I did my restraining order. You guys need to get, get going because you can either be part of the scandal or you could be a part of the solution. Or it could be like the David Bray incident in Tacoma, where he shot his wife in the head in front of his kids. I lived there then. And the cops covered it up until the incident happened, 12 and a half million dollars later to the grandparents. And I know somebody is a friend of the daughter that's a survivor of that. And the city managers covered it up. And the cops finally came forth with anonymous letters and said, yeah, they could have prevented their lives. Me and Joanna can't even come out of our places because of this. You've got to, I dumped my trash at three o'clock in the morning and I take my phone and camera with me. This is wrong. Brad Thurman hasn't came forth. Period. How hard is it to drive out there? How hard is it to have it? We went and seen Victoria Blazo and your Director of Human Resources. I said, would you ladies like to record this? They go, oh, no, we're not recording anything. Well, what's that tell you? I'd record it. I will take a lie detector test. Joanna will take a lie detector test. They're 1,250 bucks a piece. I will pay for them. I want the Sheriff's Department, senior officers that came out. I'm the reporting person and they go to the manager's office. And then they didn't even look at the video. I have it on audio if you want me to play it. He called me a fucking faggot, said he was going to kick my ass. How much more do we need? You need to get an appointment with Brad Thurman and somebody better get off their butts. Because shit's going to run downhill and I don't care who it takes. But I am not moving, like he said, which you're outside talking to somebody else saying they just need to move because it was overheard, believe it or not, you didn't know it, but by Joanna Barnhart, Rick Thurman. Yes, why don't you just move? Well, you know what? Some of these people can't move. They don't have the money to. I have a little bit more money than they do, but it isn't that. When the cop came out last week, he said, Mr. Johnson, they told me you were the problem in this park. I said, okay, how long have they been here? He goes, I don't know. I said, they've been here two and a half years. I go, do you know how long I've been here? He goes, no. I said 10. He's the same senior officer that would have been the guy that writes the report that didn't even look at the video, audio saying, what it, the, call me a fucking faggot and say he's going to kick my ass. That could be a hate crime today. When do we get off our derriers and do something as the officials of this board of commissioners? And I'll give you the report number to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Joanna's going to file one too. Barbara is going to file one. I'm filing with the DOJ because I don't trust any of it anymore. Somebody's going to make you guys responsible and the Sheriff's Department. When you have reporting people to a crime and they come out and talk to the other people that committed the crime first, and then they don't even look at your evidence. And then he tells me that I got five people in there. They weren't even there. Plus, they're the ones that ganged up and punched this man in the face, seven year old. They're the ones that pistol whipped Tim Gilbert. And I ordered those records yesterday from Dispatch 911. I did three years of public request. PUD. I ordered the public request from Puget Power, okay? Reason why, I got a letter from their attorney. You guys want to read it? Remove your flowers from the telephone pole, Mr. Johnson. Okay, I've had those flowers on that telephone pole. Plus, the manager said I got the best looking place in the park. Okay, and the owners of the park said, Mr. Johnson, you keep your place. They're the ones that wanted me to be the manager of that park, which I did not, said no. This guy right here says they got notified by PUD, Mr. Craig McCurry. Notified. They got notified. I get a public request form with PUD. Guess what? Paul calls him up, tells him he's got a lawsuit with a tenant and he hung some flowers. Those flowers have been sitting there for three years. These people here from PUD wrote a better report than any sheriff's report I've seen at all. And that's what I got to say. And mark my words, I'm not going anywhere and I'm not just moving, Rick Dahl, and neither is Joanna. You called me a liar. You were deceptive. Because here's the pictures that you and.
You should pull up that, that, that meeting. I'm pretty sure I didn't say liar, but it's okay. It's okay. You got your opinion. I'm, I'm good with it.
These pictures, and I told you at that time when I looked through these and Tracy Jackson didn't bring a tape measure to even measure the distance between the rigs. Period. She goes, she said on, on record.
Okay, we got it. We got it. Thank you.
So I'm going to leave these pictures here for you folks because I think I don't want anything distorted. But I know all you guys got those pictures that day because I left this meeting and sent them to you. Now, you're the chairperson, sir, and Roberts rules. You can be eligible for charges and you can, I can file them at the.
Charge me.
You did call me a liar. And actually, you lied to your own constituents, okay?
Charge me. Charge me.
Here's the pictures. There they are. And yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fed up. And here's the picture of Tracy Jackson, the Director of the Building Department provided. They were totally deceptive. I told her that day. They were, the complaint was.
You want to be on the mic, please?
I'm done. Thank you. Hopefully figure it out, folks.
Any other comments? On a lighter note, the sun is out today. Thank you. And people vote. Okay. Any other comments?
I, I can't help but say, just for clarity's sake, the commissioners have zero control over the sheriff. Sheriff is an independently elected entity.
Yeah.
And. That's true of all the other electors too.
Oh, one thing does come to mind. And it's actually an apology on, on my part because I, I missed this. And it's the city of Kalama, when they had their issue with their, their council and, and they lost a council person. The city had so many days to replace that person. And if they didn't replace that person, then it fell to the county commissioners to fill that vacancy. And it came to our attention that that date has passed. And so now it'll, it'll be to the, the election. And I apologize. I, I look back through my emails and, and in earlier mid-August, our attorney sent out a, he didn't send a, I was carbon copied on a, on a communication from him outlining, he was kind of giving an opinion on what had happened in Kalama and outlining the, the process. And the process stated that if Kalama didn't pick a replacement within a certain period of time, then it would fall to Board of County Commissioners. And I, I guess I, I made an erroneous assumption that the city of Kalama would take care of their own business, but they, they didn't. And then that, and then we didn't. And, and I take responsibility for that. I apologize to the citizens of Kalama because it looks like they took advantage of that and, and put some taxes on them that, that maybe wouldn't have happened if they had another, another person. So I just wanted to bring that out. It wasn't, it's Commissioner Mortenson's district, but it wasn't his, his fault. And it was something that fell through my cracks.
If I could comment, I, I do appreciate that. It's when an event occurs, we typically try and ferret out what is the thing we should do to announce to anybody downstream might be an incident. So in, in this case, it was really a function of the council, the Kalama City Council, the clerk of the board should have, should have just sent, sent an announcement to us saying, we haven't been able to come to a conclusion or we have not appointed a person. It's now your problem. That did not happen. And I, I think that's the beginning of a, of a bad chain of events.
Yeah.
Let me leave it at that.
Well, I, I remember getting the information and normally had a vacancy occurred earlier in a term of office. The appointments would have been made. The, the timing this time where, where the, the deadline ended up just prior to an election. I, my perspective is better let the people choose their own leader rather than us intervening. If the results of the election are pretty overwhelming, that wouldn't necessarily be changed later on. I'm more than, more than willing to fill that vacancy with the person that won the election. Again, it's, it's a matter of timing and I wouldn't want to substitute our judgment to pick somebody that would serve two weeks and, and then have to leave. So.
Yeah.
I, you know, I don't have a problem with the delay. It's just kind of one of those unique timing things. And, and they, I don't think they were really anxious about anything in particular coming, coming up. They still had their six. I think they've got.
Well, it, it doesn't look, look, look good, but from a practical standpoint, I thought that with the election, the elected individual would take office immediately. But the answer is in question. So it may be coming before us that once we know who won the election, we will appoint. I would go ahead and appoint the individual.
Before it's certified?
I'm not even sure. It depends on the numbers. You know, I've, I've not seen the certification change anything. I'll, we should consult with the auditor, who's an expert at this. And if, under advice of the auditor says that we should hold off to make sure, then we will. Otherwise.
Yeah.
And otherwise, I think that seat remains empty until January 1st. The, the situation was like, you had mentioned it, Mr. Chairman, there, they were, took advantage of a situation. And I want to compliment John J. Bush, who sat there the moment he knew the outcome of the election. He made sure he didn't do things that really required considerable chiming in from all three commissioners.
Anyway, I just, you know, I, I, I'll tell you when I, when I mess up. And hopefully we don't do that too often. I don't think I do, but, but I always try to be transparent with you. And I, I felt like I missed that one. So, so it is what it is. Anything else before we adjourn this thing? Okay, we will adjourn. Thank you.